I'd like to call this meeting to order. Welcome here, everyone. It's good to see a good turnout. And at this time, I would like to give the opening to Counselor Bill Hebert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's been nearly three weeks since the Southeast Event Center opened to the public. This center is truly a regional meeting place with people coming from not only our city of Steinbeck, but also from many surrounding communities. So far, the most excitement has been around hockey. It's been a lot of fun watching the Steinbeck Pistons and their quest for another championship. Congratulations on their season and the entertainment they bring to the community. Unfortunately, it's over for this year, so best of luck for next year. I've also had the privilege of watching my oldest two grandsons each play a game in this venue, and I was able to bring my mom to one of the games. She was thrilled. And I'm amazed at the community spirit that's been present at each event. Only positive feedback. Recently, I've been thinking about the background of sport in the community of Steinbeck and what it took to get the Centennial Arena built in 1967. Back in the 1940s and 50s, Steinbeck was a conservative religious community where sports were frowned upon, in particular on Sundays. But change came to Steinbeck in 1946, largely due to a key personality in the name of the new manager of the Royal Bank of Canada, Thomas G. Smith, who we'd like to pay tribute to tonight. Thomas was born in Mayfair, Manitoba, 1908. At the age of four, lost his dad due to a farm accident. And at the age of 21, had part of his leg amputated due to a sports injury. In spite of his hardship, Mr. Smith had a passion for community spirit and sport, which led him to many new endeavors. He came to Steinbeck, first of all, as a banker, helping many families and businesses get established, including my parents, getting a referral to him when they were denied by the local credit union to build a new house. TJ, as he was often referred to, had a keen sense for the youth of Steinbeck. Recognizing the lack of activities in the community, he got involved. Starting in the early 1950s, he was instrumental in bringing the 4-H Club to the Steinbeck area. Secondly, he also started the Boys Club in Steinbeck. And most prominently, the Little League baseball was his passion, which was very successful in the development of solid citizens. And many of the young boys later on became lawyers, teachers, bankers, car salesmen, a popular occupation in the automobile city, business owners, grocers, even a journalist, plus a writer or two. And most prominently, his son followed in his example and became a lawyer and established Smith Newfield Children, which is today Steinbeck's largest law firm. In 2023, Thomas G. Smith was inducted into Manitoba's Baseball Hall of Fame. Adding to the legacy of TG Smith, he was notably the strongest advocate to Steinbeck's Centennial Arena in 1966, opening in 1967. This quest started in 1947 by submitting a letter to the editor of the Carolina News stating the importance of recreational facilities for the betterment of the community's youth. This was met with much opposition, first of all, from the church community downplaying the need. In 1960, a referendum was held in order to build an arena, but was defeated 318 to 162. A second referendum in early 1966 won 345 to 141. To build the arena the following year, adding the ice plant. Total cost of the arena, including the ice plant, was only $185,000. The grand opening of the facility was attended by 2,000 residents from Steinbeck and surrounding area. After 20 years of managing the Steinbeck branch of the Royal Bank of Canada, plus being a strong community builder, Thomas G. Smith retired, moving back to Winnipeg. To end, I would like to read a poem written by a friend of the family by Clint Taves. "TG Smith rode into town; forbidden walls came tumbling down. Walls that divided faith from fun were breached, set board and captives on the run. TG knew the loss of limb, but the game remained inside of him. He started the joy he used to know, with hundreds more to play and grow. The killjoy stood against his vision, spreading turmoil and division. Be he had opened up the door, and youthful passion wanted more. His vision over many years has built up youth, and blessed the town. The legacy he left behind is shared by thousands more, because a man refused to quit and opened up a door." Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hebert. Sure would like to have that price tag on our arena. Okay, so we've got the agenda in front of us, counsel, looking for a motion to approve. Counselor Hebert, second by Counselor Penner. Call for the question. All's in favor. Opposed, that is carried. We have the minutes of March 18th, 2025, a regular council meeting. We've all had a chance to review, looking for a motion to approve. Counselor Hebert, second by Counselor Siemens. Call for the question. All's in favor. Opposed, that is carried. Counselor, is there any business arising from the minutes? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. It is just a little before 7:35, but since I feel we're ready, we'll go right into the public hearing. So the first public hearing is by law 2244. This is referring to the official community plan. We'll be doing first and second reading today, counsel. And at this time, I would like to close the council meeting, open the public hearing. Mr. Warke, Dean, could you please introduce this file?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will defer to the city's planner, Ms. Lacey Godet, for the introduction and information for councils and the public's information.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The purpose of Bylaw 2244 is to complete the periodic review and to update the city's official community plan as required under the Planning Act. Under the Planning Act, all municipalities and urban centers are required to review their land use policies every five years. The current official community plan, Bylaw 2099, was adopted in 2018. The OCP provides a long-term vision and goals as to how we want to see the city develop over the next 25 to 30 years. The OCP is the city's highest-level land use policy planning document, which is intended to help determine the specific policies forming the city's zoning bylaw. The OCP is intended to guide council's decision-making process respecting land uses, services, infrastructure, and environmental stewardship in accordance with the city's goals and to direct development practices to be compatible with the land base and between the identified practices. The OCP enables a framework within which a more detailed regulation of land uses and development may be dealt with through regulatory tools like a zoning bylaw or other land use-related decisions of council. Notices pursuant under the Planning Act have been completed, and there are three items of correspondence that have been received after packages were completed and given to council prior to the public meeting. There is a report from Community Planning, which recommends giving consideration to suggestions by various government agencies. However, the plan is generally consistent with the land use policies and the provincial land use policies. The recommendation from administration is that council accept the proposed revisions to Bylaw 2244 as noted, and, subject to the outcome of the public hearing, give both first and second reading to Bylaw 2244. If second reading is given, Bylaw 2244 must be submitted to the minister for consideration and approval. I will now hand over the presentation to Carrie Schultz, the consultant with WSP, who has been doing the work with the city over the past two years on the plan.
All right, good evening, everyone. Yes, so as Lacey mentioned, I'm Carrie Schultz. I'm a senior land use planner at WSP, and we are the consulting firm that was retained by the city to help you develop your new OCP and new zoning bylaw. So this public hearing is just for the OCP, the official community plan. And then, following this public hearing, there will be a second public hearing specific to the zoning bylaw. So basically, the purpose of this hearing is to provide an opportunity for the city to receive representations from interested parties in the community and also to note that public hearings are a requirement that allow affected persons of the community to provide their views to council. So I have a brief presentation just to kind of describe the overall process that was taken to highlight some of the major changes from your current OCP to this new OCP. Yeah, so I'll just get right into it. So this is the project timeline. So these types of projects do take a significant amount of time and investment. We did start this project back in April of 2023, and then there were multiple major milestones along the way. So, for example, we completed the background report in August 2023. We conducted key stakeholder engagement and the community visioning workshop and online survey in September of 2023. We completed the first draft of the OCP a year ago in March 2024. As well as, following that, we completed edits to the OCP based on feedback received from the province, feedback received from council, as well as feedback received from administration. So today, we are now at the last stage, where you can see the "We Are Here" icon. We're entering the final phase of the project, which is essentially the formal adoption process. So, as required under the Planning Act, when a municipality undertakes a comprehensive review of their official community plan, you must engage with the public. So, as I already mentioned, we conducted a community visioning workshop, and this was also supplemented by conducting key stakeholder interviews, where we engaged with multiple stakeholders through emails and phone calls. So together, the visioning workshop and stakeholder engagement led to the creation of the vision statement for the OCP and the planning principles that guide the overall policies. We also held a public open house in January of this year to present the draft OCP and to get feedback from the public. And both the visioning workshop and public open house had corresponding surveys, so we also used information from those surveys to help us inform the policies. So now, again, here we are at the final stage, which is to have the public hearing before giving the OCP bylaw first and second reading. So every official community plan within the province falls within the provincial planning framework. And whatever new official community plan that is proposed, it has to generally comply with the Planning Act, as well as the provincial planning regulation. So as you can see here in the diagram, the official community plan falls under the Planning Act, and then the subsequent bylaws after the OCP have to also comply with the OCP. So generally, the OCP must comply with the Planning Act and provincial planning regulation. Overall, the purpose of the OCP is to set out that long-term vision for the future of the community, to provide plans and policy statements that address physical, social, environmental, and economic objectives, to describe how and where the community wants land to be developed, and it also contains measures for implementation. Why update? As Lacey already mentioned, your current OCP was adopted in 2018. And under the Planning Act, it is a requirement that a municipality shall undertake a detailed review of their OCP within five years of the adoption of the current plan. So basically, when we undertake these types of projects, it provides us and the municipality the opportunity to update policies within the OCP so that they align with changes to provincial legislation that have happened in the last several years, including recent amendments to the Planning Act. We can also introduce new policies and update existing policies based on more current information. We develop a new vision statement to help us direct growth of land use in the community. And overall, for administration, it's always nice when you improve the formatting and the clarity, just basically to make the bylaw itself easier to administer. And then we can ensure, because you were able to do the OCP and zoning bylaw at the same time, that the policy changes in the OCP can be implemented through the zoning bylaw. So I'm going to highlight some of the main features of the OCP. So, under the provincial planning regulation, we are required to draft a vision statement. And so, based on the community visioning session and key stakeholder engagement, this was the vision statement that was crafted. "Steinbeck is a vibrant community where residents can live, work, and play, characterized by inviting streetscapes and thriving local businesses. The economic landscape fosters innovation, ensuring residents have access to diverse employment opportunities, amenities, and services. Residents can benefit from a diverse housing landscape that caters to various needs, promoting affordability, a strong sense of community, and sustainability." Following the vision, we crafted multiple planning principles. So kind of taking what's partly common practice, partly best practice, as well as kind of incorporating all the feedback that we received, these are the seven planning principles that we came up with. So, planning for economic development. So this promotes the expansion of existing businesses and encourages new types of uses to provide and retain more local jobs. Planning for housing. Providing flexibility to accommodate a wider range of housing options and tenures to allow residents to age in place. Planning for downtown. Recognizing the uniqueness of the downtown area and the importance of the Central Business District to the city. And this also encourages mixed use and infill development within that central business district. Planning for growth, as you're well aware. Your population continues to expand, it seems exponentially. But yeah, so as part of that, you need to ensure that you have an adequate amount of land that is designated for residential uses to accommodate Steinbeck's rapidly growing population. And then also, planning for active transportation and recreation. So improving the active transportation infrastructure within the community to help improve accessibility for everyone and contribute to a healthier and more sustainable urban environment. Planning for the environment. So protecting those environmentally sensitive lands. You have a number of canals and drains that run through the city, so ensuring that those are protected. And then, planning for the community. So creating gathering spaces in neighborhoods or improving other community amenities, increasing housing options, kind of implementing all those tangible things and intangible things that comprise a community. So, between the vision and the planning principles, this kind of helped guided the direction that the policy would take. So it is, I'm not sure exactly how long the document is, but it's around 45, 50 pages. So I'm just going to highlight the major changes between what you currently have and what we're proposing in this new bylaw. So first, we'll start with the mapping changes. And I know you won't be able to see the small tiny print, but I will explain everything as we go through. So, basically, the mapping changes can be described as, one of the major ones is that the lands north of PTH 52, south of Park Road West, between Twin Creek Road and Keating Road, are now becoming residential and commercial policy areas, sorry, residential and commercial policy areas, whereas they were previously Development Reserve 1 and 2. We adjusted the boundaries for the Central Business District and Transitional District Policy Areas. So, for example, we included some additional lots south of PTH 52 to Geesebeck Street, and an additional lot is now considered to be part of the CBD designation. Additional lot on Hanover, southeast of PTH 12. We also removed some land from the Central Business District at the south end and changing it to a park. And then, we also converted some lots that were Transitional Policy Area to Central Business District Policy Area to provide them more opportunities for development. We also re-designated the lands in regards surrounding the landfill, but that has since been converted back to Development Reserve 1, so technically, there's no change there. But I just wanted to highlight that so that there's no confusion. And then, we also designated lands east of Hespler Street South, adjacent to the city boundary, as a residential policy area from Development Reserve 1. So, the public open house was in January, and so obviously, it's been about two and a half months since that took place. And so, in response to some of the comments we received at the public open house and in talks with the city and the province, there are some additional changes that I just want to highlight so that if people had attended the public open house, that they know that there's several changes that have happened since then. So, you can kind of see the little white boxes on the land use designation map. So I'll start in the northwestern corner and kind of make my way down and just describe what those changes are for you. So the first one, it was changed to industrial in gray there, and it was a small strip, and it was previously commercial and residential. Next, we changed a small lot to industrial from residential, just south of PTH 52 there. And then, just following along that pink Transitional Policy Area, we changed a lot from the Central Business District from commercial, residential, and transitional. The following lot is changed to Transitional from residential. The following one from that was changed to Transitional from commercial. And then, several more lots in the Transitional Policy Area, sorry, in the Central Business District area were converted to Transitional. And then again, as already mentioned, the lands surrounding the landfill, technically, there is no change, and that remains as Development Reserve 1. So those are the major mapping changes. I also wanted to highlight the major text changes to the policies within the plan. So, for example, we added a policy statement outlining the ways that the city could consider the future development of a public transportation system. We strengthened policies related to active transportation. We added policies aimed at promoting energy efficiency, protecting the environment, and addressing environmental impacts. We added a policy that prohibits the use of private wells for buildings that are connected to or have the potential to connect to the municipal water system. And then, we also indicated in a new policy that new or infill development in the Transitional District Policy Area, which is that area in pink that was shown on the map, should consider the physical character of the existing neighborhood and existing development. Since the public open house, there were very minor text changes to the policies that don't really have an impact on the intent. It was more just for clarification and just some minor formatting issues such as updating the tables, you know, to make the imperial measurements first as opposed to the metric, just as a preference. As part of this process, we sent the draft OCP to the province for an informal provincial circulation. So what happens for this is that community planning circulates the draft OCP to all the commenting departments such as MIT and, well, not agriculture, it doesn't really matter in the city, but yeah, MIT. Sorry, they keep changing their names, but you know, Water Stewardship, those types of departments, to provide their comments and to let us know if there's anything that we need to consider or revise prior to getting to this stage. And this was their comment. Generally, there are no issues with the proposed policies and land use designations. Community planning stated that the draft OCP is generally consistent with the provincial land use policies, and they are encouraged and happy to see the inclusion of new policies regarding active transportation, energy efficiency, and the mention of public transportation. So given the fact that we've met provincial requirements, we can now move on to this stage. So, as counsel, you've decided to proceed with the public hearing first, and then, obviously, depending on what happens in the public hearing, you may proceed with first and second reading of the OCP. I just wanted to highlight the process that's outlined in the Planning Act. So, for example, if the OCP receives 25 or more objections, you may still proceed with first and second reading. However, you must send a notice of second reading to all the objectors. After the city sends the second reading notice to objectors, those people will have up to 14 days to submit a second objection to the Minister, care of the Steinbeck Community Planning Office. If counsel receives 25 or more second objections, those objections must then be referred to the municipal board. So I just wanted to give some concluding remarks. So basically, to summarize, we started this process back in April of 2023. And throughout the process, we've included stakeholder and public engagement. We've considered individual landowner requests. We've had multiple discussions with the steering committee and administration on issues and decision items. We've also met with council along the way, and we've also consulted with the province. So, that basically concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that counsel may have for me.
Counselor, are there any questions? No, we're fine, thank you.
Okay. You guys make it easy. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Carrie, and if anything comes up, we can always have you back and answer, okay? Okay, so we did ask, because we knew there were going to be lots of people here today, so we asked for a sign up. So we want to take anyone who signed up first to speak. Anyone who wants to speak tonight can speak, okay? You don't have to have signed up. We just wanted to make sure that we would take those that signed up first. Right now, we're looking at the official community plan. When you do, if you do come up with comments, questions, or objections, all we ask is that you state your name and your address and what part of the official community plan that you are objecting to, so that our staff can work on it from there. So, on the sign up sheet, I have Brad Unger, Brad from 48 Brookdale Crescent. Do you want to speak to the OCP, the official community plan?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Sorry, the list of names we gave you were specific to the zoning bylaw 2245.
Oh, these were, okay, these were right to the, okay, good. And we'll wait for that. Okay, then is there anyone here with comments, questions, or objections to the official community plan? Okay, go ahead. Yeah, you go to the mic, and you'll have to state your name and your address.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Leona Dirksen, and I live in the RM of La Brokry. So just a question about the OCP. I was just wondering, and thank you, Carrie, for that presentation. I was wondering if you could tell us, when was Bylaw 2245 for the emergency shelter first introduced in the OCP?
That would be a question for administration? Was it put?
Separate bylaws? So, you want to speak in the microphone?
Yeah, come to the microphone. Because I did not understand, like, I don't think it's in the OCP.
Yeah, I think there's two separate bylaws. So there's the official community plan, which is kind of the longer-term planning document, looking into the future. You know, how should things be developed over the next 25 to 38 years? So it'll have a lot of policy statements. They're kind of high level, they're not really specific. I know you're here from the end, so I can speak directly to that too, if you like. And then, Bylaw number 2245 is the zoning bylaw, so that's a separate bylaw. So if you remember in the diagram, the zoning bylaw kind of falls under the official community plan. So it's a tool that is used to help implement the policies of the OCP. And the zoning bylaw is where you would have a list of your permitted uses or conditional uses. You would have, like, building setback requirements, like the numbers kind of thing. That's what the zoning bylaw would take care of. So, in regards to the specific land use that I know you're really concerned about, it would be, there wouldn't be anything, being honest, there wouldn't be anything in the OCP that would prohibit that type of development from occurring.
So in terms of permitting or conditional use, that wouldn't?
It wouldn't be in the OCP. It would be in the zoning bylaw, which we will discuss next.
Okay, excellent, thank you. That answers my question.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to the official community plan? Okay, go ahead. When you do state your name and address, also state what part of the plan that you're wanting to.
Okay, my name is Arthur Adair. I'm 251 Stonebridge. And really, it's a question about where the plan... And really, it's a question about where the plan can be actually viewed in the detail that that you're working with. Is it online?
Is this plan online?
Yes, it is.
Yes, it's on our it's on our city website.
And generally speaking, how many people do you think in Steinbach actually even know about it?
Well, we've had a we've had an official community plan for decades. This is what we do. We do, we plan our growth on this. We we use this document to to make the zoning bylaw. And so I would assume many do know, but because we, it is in, it's in our our meetings, it's discussed, and there's stories done on it. But if if that's not, if that's not well known, I guess we could try and do a better job of communicating it. But I've I've always known about this, even before I was on council, but I have friends that were counselors too. But but no, this has always been common knowledge.
But you don't have a survey or any information to back that up?
Like, if people that.
Just ordinary residents that, do they, you know, a telephone call?
No, I don't think we have any survey or any any questionnaire if the people know about a a community plan. Yeah.
That's all I have anyways. Well, turn it over. Thank you.
As Mr. Mayor stated, since the Planning Act came into effect in the 1970s, municipalities in Manitoba have had a development plan. It's what we typically call them, but Steinbach calls it an official community plan. As far as how many people knows, like, we wouldn't know the exact numbers. However, the Planning Act clearly outlines what the requirements are for advertising. So in regards to advertising for the public hearing, in regards to advertising for the public open house that we had. And so I know that the city administration adhered to all legislative requirements. And then again, also, as was mentioned, all the documents are available online. Yeah, I don't know what else I could add. I don't, I know it doesn't directly answer your question, but hopefully that just gives you a little bit more information.
You can actually do this one.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, but it is it is made available on our website, so it can be can be retrieved. Okay, is there anyone else? Seeing none, I will ask one more time.
My given name is Ronald James. I'm of the House of Clippenstein, and I live in Steinbach on Avondale. I've gone through this, I think the first time I seen this was somewhere in October. How many minutes do I have?
Well, you can just.
I don't want to take too long, but I've decided to take a different approach to my my questions here. And I'll start with a bit of a statement. Number one, I have to list it at the beginning that I object. And I won't quite say for what yet, but I object, because you need 25 objections, so you got one for sure. But what I would like to do is bring us back a little bit. Bring us back to what was important to my parents, my grandparents, when they settled here. The men and women who live in this community have watched with horror as God-given knowledge, understanding, and wisdom has been dismissed, banned, and even outlawed, while ideas like DEI, and SOG123, and WEF, and WHO, and the UN have been forced onto us. Our public schools have become child abuse. Our health care appears more like harm care. And with MADE, it appears to have become a death cult. Our rain is toxic, and our foods are being inundated with mRNA DNA-altering modifications that is changing our DNA and poisoning our foods. That is what I am getting from the people I talk to in this community, and we talked about community. So I have seven questions. I don't know, based on the answers I get on them, I won't have to ask them all, but Earl, are you a Freemason?
No.
Okay, thank you for that. The second question I would have is, Earl, are you a global mayor?
I don't know what that means. Sorry. So I guess no.
Have you taken a public oath of office?
Yes, I have.
So you weren't, you didn't have a declaration of office?
We take, we take a public.
Public oath, okay. Thank you. Are you aware that your position on that chair and all those seated beside you are all here by the consent of the public?
Yep, correct.
You're all aware of that?
Voted in, yeah.
Yes, by the consent of the public. Don't ever forget that point. I might go back to it. So do you understand then, and I I can see that, do you understand then that you are under full liability for breach or dereliction of any duties that you swore an oath to? Do you know that they could take your house away? Public and private liability? Just want to let you know, because what I wanted to do today is create a foundation. The found, pardon me, sorry.
What is your, what is your, what, in the official community plan?
Yes.
What are you objecting to?
What I am trying to do for the benefit of this room is create a foundation of understanding of when you deal with this plan, because I could get into the five or 10 or 15 different things of the plan, but that just gets you down into the ditch. Because you guys are are trustees. You have been given a trusteeship for us, so I want you to realize the importance that we have entrusted to you as you deal with the ins and outs and the little things of the documents. I don't want you to be funded by George Soros. I don't want you to be getting paychecks in your pockets so that you can do certain things. And maybe you all wish you were richer and Bill Gates was funding you.
You know what? I think we're veering off topic here.
Okay, so you asked a question.
It's coming from here, okay? I'm going to ask you to be quiet.
So I'll keep on this this thing. My foundation for you on both plans, so this way I don't.
What is your, what is your concerns with the parts of the official community plan?
Okay, my concern. My concern, sorry, my concern is I would like to remind you that your agenda should be local needs only, like housing, like health, like roads, like sewer, and the well-being of the men and women who live here. That's it. Do you know of any other agenda that you should be having here? I'm just establishing the foundation that you have your meeting with tomorrow or the next day. So I'm almost done. Thank you for your patience. How many of you have actually read the official community plan, the entire official community plan? Show of hands. How many of you have actually read it? Every line?
All read it.
Okay. And how about the zoning bylaw? It's over 100 pages.
Every one of us.
All read it.
Okay.
We do.
Thank you. Then, at this point, I would like to thank you for taking care of our needs, and if we find you don't, we will be back and hold you accountable for breach of your oath. Thank you very much.
Still don't know what his objection is. Yeah, like you don't.
That was an objection.
But you haven't objected to anything in here? Like, what have you objected to? You've cited many things. You've called us bribe takers, all these things you've called us, but you have not objected to anything of value in here.
For the record, have any of you, did you hear me accuse them of taking bribes? Or did you just hear me ask them if they had taken them?
Okay, fine. You asked us, you didn't want us to be funded by a certain gentleman. I don't even know who you were talking about.
That's funny. I I don't need to say anymore. Thank you, I object.
Is there anyone here with comments, questions, or objections to this file, the official Okay.
Hi, I am Angela Bernadette of the House of Isaac, and I live in Steinbach. I just have one question. One time when I was traveling home last year, the news reported that you, Mayor Funk, said that instead of having vehicles parked on Main Street, that shoppers could park behind the businesses themselves, and you guys want to change it, change that lane to be a cycling lane, so it's safer for cyclists. And I guess my question is, how would that be feasible in the wintertime when there's snow? And we have snow sometimes in September, we have snow all the way to April and May. And is that part of this zoning plan that you have with all these different changes, changes from commercial to residential and all that? Is that part of that plan? Is that happening now, or is that something you're looking at in the future? Because also, how will seniors get around if they can't use their automobiles? And the businesses downtown don't have sufficient parking for the business owner and their staff, never mind for shoppers. So I'm wondering if that is included in all of this with this rezoning that you have, because there's different areas. I can't read it, and I can't see what's what, but I'm just asking, is that part of the changing that you have on that diagram that you showed? Because I was never aware of any kind of meetings until last night about today. So I've never known about any any meetings, ever.
Well, I think the.
And I also object.
Okay, the best I can remember of a story like that was, I believe, the redevelopment that we're experiencing downtown. And so in the OCP, what we like to see, and in the bylaw too, is as new development's happening on Main Street, we want to bring it right to the sidewalk. And then then parking at that point could be put behind the building, right? So, well, if a new, if a new building is developed and is put right to Main Street, it will have, the development plan would have to have parking in the back. I'm not talking about existing, I'm talking about new buildings, right? Because we want to, we want to look at, like, our our Main Street should be like vibrant, and we want to have a downtown where is a commercial corridor, right? So it looks more impressive when they're right up to, right up to the sidewalk, and that's what we're doing. So this is new development. This isn't old development or existing, but as development happens, for example, Avedo, the six-story building that they're building, is right on the sidewalk, the parking will be in the back. So it's new development. Do we want to see more active transportation? Yes. And that's why this is part of the official community plan, is an enhanced active transportation. It's healthy for the community, it's healthy for the for the for the resident to be doing more by active transportation. Yeah, we've got a challenge. We've got months, months of snow and ice, and it's very difficult. But those months when it's not, then we would like to see more active transportation. Are we going to have designated bike lanes? I don't think so. They they don't work, they they lessen traffic, they make it more difficult to move around, but I think we can share the road together, bicyclists and 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 vehicles. So that's where my statements were coming from. So if it was misinterpreted or misunderstood, I do apologize, but that is where we, it's new development on, in our central business district, and at that time, there'll be parkings in the back. And also, yes, we we do want to, there is more and more desire for active transportation, and we do want to facilitate that as well. But we also realize that we are the automobile city, and we do have to make sure that our our vehicles still have place on the road. Okay?
I think it was, it was reported.
Okay. Well, thank you, whatever it was, yep, you bet, thank you. Okay, I will ask one more time. Is there anyone here with comments, questions, or objections to the official community plan? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing, open the council meeting. Counsel, how would you like to proceed? Counsel, seeing this.
Most approve.
Second by counselors. So Extrach, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me try and get my thoughts out here. The OCP that we just heard and with the presentation, we've been working at this as a council, together with administration and WSP consultants since 2023. We've had a lot of meetings, we've read through it many times, and we've made a lot of suggestions on what, how we feel as counselors about it. The city admin staff, together with the consultants and the input from council, put this plan together. It's a document to provide the city with an ongoing, long-term plan with policies so Steinbach is developed in a way that is orderly and part of a long-term vision. City staff need to be recognized that this is a large undertaking. They dealt with WSP consultants that provided a lot of valuable input, the community at the different public events, our developers, both in commercial and residential, provincial planning office, and then they listened to city council's political agenda that are not always relevant to the situation being discussed, but they answered all those questions and did appease us in different ways. And that's all combined in what you see in the OCP here today. There have been many changes here, I'll just pick out a few. Expanding the vision and planning principles, as we grow, we need to provide more detail into various areas like economic development, housing, growth, active transportation environment downtown. We we saw all of these different things, but also collaboration, public hearings to deal with the various issues, and of course, our community. We have to rethink housing, at least try and see what we can do about affordability, more multifamily and rental units, that's in the plan. Our growth needs to go up more than out as we develop a more walkable and vibrant downtown core. Transportation, how we move people, either active transportation through pathways, and just starting to understand what public transportation looks like. And we need to build electric vehicle charging infrastructure. Five years ago, when we did the plan the last time, we never talked about electric charging vehicles. If I have a disappointment with this plan, it is with our active transportation. It is my opinion, it's incomplete. And we haven't addressed all the things that I would have liked to see in it, like connecting the various parts of Steinbach, potential pathways to loop, things like Clear Spring Greens Path back to Steinbach. We still can't access Shopping Center by walking or by bicycle, because there's no way to get to Superstore, for example, by walking or by bicycle. And we need to improve, I would have liked to see how we could improve the Share the Road program that we initiated 12 years ago. While we've come a long way, and I really appreciate the the plan that is there, I think we can become more pedestrian. I think we can become more pedestrian in our long-term plan. The municipal services, we've looked at that. Landfill, wastewater, drinking water, all reviewed along with the impacts of overland flooding prevention, which is an issue every once in a while. Land use is a large part of administration with a focus on infill and residential policies. Our commercial policies reviewed, including location, highway sites, and making sure lot sizing is appropriate for upcoming uses. A focus on the CBD, or Central Business District, and the transitional areas around it to better manage how our downtown develops. Planning around our industrial areas for future growth has, as existing industries grow and new industries look to move to Steinbach. All these plans need to be in place. We need to have a vision on how we grow Steinbach. And of course, planning future green space and parks. It's important that we have all different areas in our community. But again, it's this document, and I like what I see in the OCP, is to provide city with a long-term plan with policies so Steinbach is developed in a way that is orderly and part of our long-term vision. And I believe that it does that.
Thank you. Anything further?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm happy to support our official community plan. As has been noted, this is something that the city does every five years. Every municipality must review and make changes to their development plan, or in our case, we call it the official community plan. It's a general policy framework that all our other policies, such as the zoning bylaw, have to comply with. And so it includes more general statements of intent. And so, for example, making it clear that any new development has to be connected to city water, city services, as opposed to private wells. Making it clear where are the mapping, the map designations are located. So for example, the Central Business District, some boundary changes there to reflect actual use. So for example, expanding a section of it to include the entire area around, you know, that section of the Southeast Event Center, because obviously that is a logical change. But also taking away the CWE designation farther down Main Street where it did not make as much sense to have that there as well. Just stating that we have policies in regards to transportation, as Counsel Seaman had alluded, and policies in regards to the encouragement of infill housing on vacant lots and residential policy areas. And so I think it's a good official community plan. It is, this plan has served us well for many years. And I think these revisions make a good plan even better, so I'm happy to support it.
Anything further of counsel? Anything closing?
No, sir.
Counsel, I too believe it's a good plan. And it is long-term. When I remember, when I first got on council in 2010, we started talking about densifying the CBD. And it started happening. But now it's really starting to happen with new development on our Main Street. And it is, it's coming right to the sidewalk as we've asked it, and parking in the back. So this is in a plan. Just because we've made changes and we're deciding to do it this way now, it's a guide to lead us into the future as we grow, that we grow in the areas that we need to grow. And there's two ways we can grow as a city. We can grow up, or we can grow out. And this plan is a nice mix. It's a wonderful blend of both those types of growth. And that's why I support that. I think this is, when you look at a city like ours that is unprecedented growth year over year, I think we need to follow a plan like that. We need to have something that guides us through this and a tool for our staff to continue to work with developers and grow our community. Call for the question. All in favor of first reading? Opposed, that is Carrie. We'll go directly into second reading. Looking for motion to approve. Counsel Hebert, second by Counsel Hebert. Any comments?
I think the comments that have been made, I agree with them. We've been working on this plan for a long time. We've been going through it. And like you've said, Mr. Mayor, this is a fluid document that'll again be reviewed five years from now. And a lot of work's gone into it. And it's, to me, it's an impressive plan. Thank you.
Anything further?
No further comment.
Anything further of counsel? Anything closing?
Thanks.
Call for the question. All in favor of second reading? That is Carrie. Thank you. Okay, we've got 6B. This is bylaw 2245. This is the zoning bylaw. Counsel will be doing first and second reading today as well. At this time, I will close the council meeting, open the public hearing. Mr. Workteen, could you please introduce this file?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You get me again. The purpose of bylaw 2245 proposes a variety of updates to the city of Steinbach zoning bylaw as a result of a detailed review and consideration of the city's land use policies. The zoning bylaw addresses the more immediate needs of planning and development. It is the guide that dictates how the city's built within the immediate five-year window. Administration has been working with the city's consultants to review and update the city's zoning bylaw 2100. The city reviews the land use policies within its zoning bylaw every five years to coincide with the review of its official community plan. City council has been presented with several drafts of this document during the review and amendment process, with the last review being completed December 3, 2024. Several opportunities for public engagement and input were also incorporated into this update process. Notices pursuant under the Planning Act have been completed, and there are several items of correspondence that have been received after packages were completed. All items have been submitted to council prior to the public meeting. There is a report from Community Planning attached which recommends giving consideration to the suggestions by the various government agencies, but concludes that the plan is generally consistent with the provincial land use policies. There are two proposed revisions suggested to bylaw 2245 that are not currently shown in the draft. One is to revise personal services to be a conditional use in the M1 Light Industrial Zone and MMX Industrial Mixed Use Zone, whereas currently they are listed as a permitted use. And the second is to add body modification as a conditional use in the M1 Light Industrial Zone and MMX Industrial Mixed Use Zone, whereas currently it's not permitted. It is recommended that counsel hold the public hearing and give first and second reading to zoning bylaw 2245, repeal bylaw 2100 with the recommended revision to change personal services to a conditional use within the M1 Light Industrial Zone and MMX Industrial Mixed Use Zone, and to add body modification as a conditional use within the M1 Light Industrial Zone and the MMX Industrial Mixed Use Zone. I will now pass it on to Carrie Schultz to give her presentation regarding the zoning bylaw.
Thank you. Yeah, this presentation will look very familiar, at least the first few slides. So I do apologize for any repetition. But if there are any new arrivals, I want to ensure that they hear all the necessary information. So again, thank you for joining us this evening. I am still Carrie Schultz. I still work at WSP. And we are the consulting firm that was retained by the city to undertake the comprehensive review of their OCP and zoning bylaw. And then, as you'll learn, these two documents are quite intertwined. You know, they depend on each other. So a lot of the processes that we took for one, we did concurrently for the other. So again, now this public hearing will be specifically for the zoning bylaw. And again, people will have opportunity to provide their feedback. So same timeline, we worked on the zoning bylaw and the official community plan concurrently. And so we're at the same stage for both bylaws. Again, we're now here undergoing the formal adoption process for the zoning bylaw. So as you heard from the last public hearing, the official community plan was given second reading. So now that will be forwarded to the province where the minister needs to approve it. And then it'll come back to the city for a third reading after that and then come into effect. And the zoning bylaw, obviously depending on what happens here this evening. But it does not require provincial approval. However, the province will be a commenting agency. And basically, a third reading of the zoning bylaw cannot happen until third reading is given to the OCP. Because the new zoning bylaw technically wouldn't comply with your current OCP. Does that make sense? Sorry if it was convoluted. So again, when we conducted the public engagement sessions for the OCP, we addressed zoning bylaw issues at the same time. And so again, through the visioning workshop, the key stakeholder engagement, the open house that we held in January, multiple meetings with counsel, with the city administration, the online, the results of the online surveys. We tried to synthesize all this information in a way that would be easy to understand and in a way that would hopefully be beneficial for the community. So as the city planner already mentioned, the zoning bylaw is a tool that is used to help implement the policies of the OCP. So it's more the immediate planning issues, as she stated, you know, immediate meaning within, you know, from now to the next five years. The zoning bylaw will set out the specific rules for the use of land and buildings and the location and form of those buildings on a lot. The zoning bylaw divides the city into zones, and it lists all the permitted uses and all the conditional uses for land and buildings in each zone. And the zoning bylaw also establishes a system of permits and procedures for development. So as we had discussed a little bit earlier, the OCP must comply with the Planning Act and provincial planning regulation. And then the zoning bylaw falls underneath that, and the zoning bylaw must comply with the proposed OCP. Again, why update? Well, the current zoning bylaw was adopted in 2018. The Planning Act requires that every municipality in Manitoba adopt a zoning bylaw. There have been a number of changes to the Planning Act and things like that that can now be incorporated into this new version of the zoning bylaw. So using the OCP policies as our guide, we now use the zoning bylaw to help us implement those vision, that vision, the objectives and the policies. The intent of the zoning bylaw is to help prevent any sort of incompatible mix of land uses. It also works to conserve existing neighborhoods, protect recreational areas and open space. And again, it's always an opportunity to improve the clarity and the formatting, just to make it easier for the administration to use. So again, I'll address the major changes that were done to the zoning map. So we've already talked about this. So a lot of the changes to the zoning bylaw map basically follow the changes that were made to the OCP land designations, because the two policy documents should align. So as already noted, we adjusted the boundaries of the central business and transitional planned overlay districts to better reflect current and anticipated land uses, including the Southeast Event Center development. We updated the zoning... Sorry, we adjusted the Development Reserve 1 and 2 zones based on changes in the OCP. And then for clarification, land that's zoned and designated as Development 1 is kind of the land that's next in line to be developed. And Development 2 land is land that would be looked at further on down the road. Since the public house in January, there were a few changes that were made to the zoning map at the direction by the city. So there were a few. So starting again at the northwestern corner, there is a redevelopment area near the intersection of First Street and Geesebeck Street. And so that, those lots were updated to reflect recent amendments. So a few lots along First Street were zoned residential low density, and they're now becoming residential medium density. If you look on the western boundary there, we removed the parks and recreation zoning on the small park spaces to ensure consistency with the rest of the zoning throughout the city. We updated 525 Main Street from CT Commercial Community to C1 Commercial Neighborhood. We also updated the area south of PTH2 on the eastern municipal boundary there, from RR to C3. We also updated the southeast corner of the city from Development Reserve 2 to Development Reserve 1, essentially just implying that that land will be ready for development sooner. And then, as noted earlier during the OCP public hearing presentation, we updated all zoning around the landfill, which basically resulted in nothing changing. And so that basically addresses the mapping changes. For the text changes, we reorganized the zoning bylaw to help make it easier to administer, to help reduce repetition and improve wayfinding. We added minimum setback requirements for development from the lagoon and landfill so that it complies with provincial legislation. We added new use classifications, including things like a data processing center, or industrial multi-use, or solar energy generating systems, and emergency residential shelter. We added detached secondary suites as an option in some zones with associated use-specific standards. In the CBD Planning Overlay District, we reduced parking requirements by one-third for all uses and exempt new uses in existing buildings from minimum parking requirements. We are now permitting multi-unit dwellings with commercials on the ground floor as a right in the Central Business District area. We're also removing the requirement for multi-unit residential dwellings in the Transitional Planted Overlay District to have commercial uses on the ground floor. There seems to be more of a demand just to have the entire structure be residential as opposed to having the commercial use on the main floor as well. And we updated and simplified the required yards in the C4 zone. And we added a maximum floor area for accessory buildings in the Development Reserve 1 and 2 zones. Again, I also wanted to address some of the changes that have been made to the zoning bylaw since the public open house. Most of the things were relatively minor in nature and more related to formatting and just ensuring that, you know, links throughout the document work and stuff like that. We updated, we did make updates to Table 7-7, which is the permitted projection regulations. So we increased the minimum side yard setback for alcoves, bay windows, and vestibules from two feet to three feet. We introduced a minimum side yard setback of three feet for balconies, not required for fire protection. And we reduced the maximum depth of cantilevers from five feet to two feet and increased the minimum setbacks from two feet to three feet. We also amended regulations for detached secondary suites to add several requirements. So for example, the minimum rear yard is now 10 feet clear of projections. The minimum side yard is five feet clear of projections. The minimum corner side yard is 10 feet clear of projections. And then we also updated the definition to emergency residential shelter. So the revised definition states that "an emergency residential shelter means a building or portion of a building used to provide for the emergency temporary lodging to persons who are homeless due to indigence or disaster and where onsite supervision is provided whenever such shelter is occupied." This may also include health, cultural, or recreational programming, individual support services, meal service, and administrative offices where such services support the operation of the emergency residential shelter. And then of note, emergency residential shelters, as we know a lot of people here today, in the current zoning bylaw are permitted use, are currently a permitted use. But now, in this proposed new zoning bylaw, counsel has requested that it be made a conditional use. We also, as with the OCP, we did circulate the zoning bylaw to the province to obtain their feedback and to ensure that there weren't any outstanding issues. So generally, they didn't identify any issues. In the report, they stated that the proposed bylaw, zoning bylaw, is generally consistent with the proposed official community plan. They just recommended several formatting changes to more easily identify the zones on the map, such as some color changes. And then they just wanted to ensure that we are consistent with the zoning district names and labels on the zoning map. and labels on the zoning map. So next steps, it's the same as it was with the OCP. Council may proceed with first and second reading of this zoning bylaw after closing the public hearing. However, if 25 or more objections are received, again, council may still proceed with first and second reading. However, they must provide a notice of second reading to all objectors. After the city sends the second reading notice to objectors, objectors will then have up to 14 days to submit a second objection to the minister, care of the Steinbach Community Planning Office. And then at that time, if council receives 25 or more second objections, the objections must be referred to the municipal board. So again, we followed the same process for the zoning bylaw as we did the OCP. This project started back in April of 2023. We included multiple rounds of stakeholder and public engagement. We considered individual landowner requests. We had discussion, multiple discussions and meetings with the steering committee and administration as well as council. And we consulted multiple times with the province to ensure that it meets provincial requirements. So that concludes my presentation in regards to the zoning bylaw. I am happy to answer any questions that council may have at this time.
Counsel, any questions for Carrie? I see none. Thank you very much.
No problem.
Good job. And we will move. Okay, so we have, I have four people on the list that want to speak to the zoning bylaw. Brad Unger, you are first. But for the record, still state your name and your address, please.
Won't be a big surprise now that I'm Brad Unger, but. So my name is Brad Unger and I live on 48 Brookdale Crescent in Steinbach, which, if you know your geography of Steinbach, that's very close to the neighborhood where the proposed site for the inn would be. So being a neighborhood, in the neighborhood is this, is very concerning to me. And I just, I don't have a lot to say, but I just want to make a few comments. Number one, saying that I really appreciate the work of council. Looking at these zoning bylaws, especially appreciated when, when it was highlighted on the one slide about the importance of conserving existing neighborhoods as that would be very foremost on my mind to conserve the neighborhood that we have and, and the businesses in that area as well. Thank you for the conditional use. I think that's, it just again shows your willingness to listen to the community and that we can share some concerns whenever there's certain developments that would concern individuals in our, in our neighborhood. So I really appreciate that. And then I, I guess I'm just going to share. Many of you maybe are aware of the fact that I was actually on the inn board for a time. And during that time, I had opportunity to listen to a lot of concerns from folks who lived in the, in the neighborhood and also from business leaders, which gave me a very firsthand knowledge of the fact that this is very important to a whole lot of people in our neighborhood. I think I can speak for them in saying that not, there's not a single one who is in any way against the idea of building a homeless shelter, a warming shelter in, in Steinbach. Importance to all of us that I've spoken to is that it be built in the correct place. And so I think some of the things that council has been working towards is exactly that, trying to find a good solution that will benefit everyone. So, thank you.
Before we move on, I, I do want to just state, this is a, this is a public hearing for the, for the bylaw. And yes, that is, the, the one change is made is one line on our, on our table from permitted use to conditional use for, for overnight shelter. Now, we, we do know the intent of the inn and we, we, we all know that there is, there's homelessness in our, in our community. We need to, we need to take care of those that are vulnerable and we, we know that. But today, tonight, we're talking about whether the conditional use should be allowed for homeless shelters. I, I don't, I, I don't want it to be about the inn tonight because we, we know the intent. We've seen a, a site plan, but we have, we don't have a detailed description of what the inn would be and we don't have a plan in front of us at this time. So I know that we've, we all know about the inn. Everyone's here for that. It's important. The, the demographic of population needs to be taken care of. But today I want to address the, the zoning bylaw and whether or not a conditional use is right for this or not. Okay, that's where I want to focus on. Thank you for your comments about the inn. And I, I know a lot of people here to support the inn and we do appreciate that. We want to hear from everyone, but I do want to keep everyone focused on the fact that we're talking about whether or not the conditional use should be part of the, of the overnight shelter process. Okay. So next on my list is Leona Dirksen. Thank you.
Take that. Yes, my name is Leona Dirksen and I'm representing the board for the inn, a transitional housing project proposed for 447 Main Street. And I did have a question for Carrie about when the emergency shelter definition was added in the, the OCP and the, in the by, in.
I can answer that question. The current zoning bylaw 2100 already has a definition of emergency residential shelter. The updated zoning bylaw that is before council today has amended the definition to expand it and has added it as a specific use within the specific table 10-1.
Okay, so we, we knew when we purchased the property that we were purchasing in the, in the correctly zoned area and the permitting wasn't an issue. And I just wonder, Carrie, if you could tell me, was it your recommend, your firm's recommendation to council at that time in regards to the permitting that it remade a permitted site?
We did bring forward a recommendation to council to, to maintain it as a permitted use. However, as council are your elected representatives in this community, they do have the authority to make a decision that's different than, than what my recommendation or what our firm's recommendation would be. Again, like there's, there's pros and cons to both sides and I don't want to imply that I'm not for the inn or against the inn. I want to try to be Switzerland neutral. But also, I just wanted to state that currently as a permitted use, yes, it would be easier to come now and apply to get your development permit as it would, well, it would be permitted. The difference with the conditional use is it basically adds an extra step to your process. So you would apply to the city for a conditional use permit. The conditional, sorry, the city would review it. They would have a public hearing in which people from the public, such as yourself, could come forward and make representation to either support it or object to it. And then it also gives council the opportunity to provide conditions for the development so that it meets standards for the area. So it is an extra step, but I would also want to say that it's not, the use hasn't been eliminated in the sense that it's, I'm going to use a double negative, not, not permitted. It's a conditional use. So there is still a high potential that it would be approved, but it allows council the opportunity to again, meet with the public and review a very specific proposal, regardless of who it's from.
And, and if I can just have your attention for a little bit longer. Recommending that it stay permitted use, would you be willing to share why you felt that it was all right for that piece of property to stay permitted?
in my view, it is currently permitted in the current zoning bylaw. We did have, you know, lengthy discussion with council and city administration. And this is what council wanted to move forward with and I do respect their decision.
I realize I'm putting you in a bit of a pickle.
You are. But I mean, I'm happy to try to answer your questions though.
Thank you, Carrie. You have. All right, and thank you, Brad, for your comments as well. We enjoyed having Brad on our board. And Brad did his best, I think, to be a mediator. Unfortunately, our board members weren't invited to a lot of those meetings and so we didn't have an opportunity to speak into them. I think that if we would have been, we could have answered a lot of people's questions and concerns. And also, I, I just want to make note that with the new zoning changes, now the permitted zone will be even closer to your home. We would be actually allowed to build a street off of, like one block off of Main Street. And so we've been very committed right from the beginning as we've made very public on our website and in all of the information that we've gone twice door-to-door to hand out in the community is that we have always considered everyone's safety paramount, the neighborhood, the people in the inn, the staff and the volunteers. And so that's why we looked very long and hard for exactly the property that we chose specifically for the zoning and because it was permitted. But I'm here to say this evening that we believe that there is a solution to the bylaw dilemma that we are facing. And we believe that if we work together as a community, we can solve this and the homelessness problem that we face. And I trust that this council has a homelessness strategy that it's been working on. The inn meets the definition of transitional housing, not only under the city of Winnipeg definitions, but also according to the government of Manitoba and the government of Canada. We want to be clear that this change of definition is not in response to the city's newly proposed bylaw. We have made this information available for a year in our media releases and on our website. This progress from an emergency shelter to transitional housing means that we are offering an even safer, effective service than what we originally thought we could offer. In fact, if you have noticed the news coming out of Dauphin and Swan River, you will know that the transitional housing pilot projects have been very successful, saving taxpayers close to $40,000.
I want to draw you back.
Yes.
To the, to the item in the.
Yes, I, I'm trying to explain why we're going to oppose the bylaw.
Well, but I, and it's fine if you just say you're, you're, you're objecting, but this is going, this is going off topic. We're talking about other communities now. This is about our, our official bylaw. And if you have an objection in that line, that, that's great.
Yes, I do.
Want to hear from you. But, but I think we need to, we need to stay on. There's going to be a lot of people talking tonight and I think we need to stay on target. And what we're talking about is the bylaw.
Yes.
Okay.
That's what I'm addressing.
I want to draw you back.
Yep, with all due respect, I think the community has the right to know why we're opposing the bylaw this evening. And so my presentation is very short.
Okay.
Very short. And the reason in bringing the case pilot project to everybody's interest is that these pilot projects are evidence that this type of approach works. Not only does it work and is safe in communities, but it saves thousands of dollars, of taxpayer dollars every year. And I thought this council would be interested in hearing that it can save up to $40,000 a year in ER visits and RCMP wellness checks alone for one person that lives on the street. And in one situation, the number of RCMP calls went down from 60 to just two calls for two tenants that were living in these housing, transitional houses. And I, and this council needs to know that the Manitoba and Canadian government will not fund emergency shelters. And so we would be looking at losing over $600,000 in potential funding if we are categorized as an emergency shelter. Our governments realize that transitional housing is a much wiser investment. This means in part that people are allowed in, off the street as they are, as long as their behaviors are respectful. They're provided case management. And I appreciate, Mayor, that you were suggesting that you didn't know what we were going to be doing and you didn't know what the, what the overall plan is. And so in answer to that question, we're going to be providing case management, wraparound care until permanent housing solutions can be found. So we're not going to be a come and go, just come in for a day and be gone. People are going to be coming, committing to long-term housing solutions. That's what we're offering at the inn. We are residential and we are social services, but we are not an emergency shelter. We trust that the city will recognize us for what we are and what we can offer and that we will make our entire city and the southeast a better place for everyone. We trust that we will be allowed to apply for a building permit as a transitional housing and that our building timeline won't be delayed. And as we have offered from the beginning, we'd be more than happy to work with the city council on this matter. But as it stands today, we must publicly oppose the proposed emergency shelter bylaw 2245 as well as the conditional use permit attached to it, both in the first and second reading. Thank you for your time and we would be more than happy to answer questions that anyone might have.
Thank you, Leona. If it is, if, if it is no longer a emergency shelter, I would probably recommend giving our staff a detailed explanation of what you're doing with a site plan. And I'll just check with Lacey Goddard, our city planner. Is that something you'd be looking for? Is something very detailed of what they're doing? And then you could see where it fits into the, the bylaw from there?
Yes, any development within the city has to come with detailed plans and outlines we can best determine where it fits within the zoning bylaw. I would just like to make a note that the proposed change to the zoning bylaw is adding emergency residential shelter as a conditional use within the specific use table. It is not site-specific to particular uses on what they're defined as. This change to the bylaw is adding emergency residential shelter to the overall use table. It is not specific to a particular project in this case.
Yeah, and that is, that is why I did, I did want to steer away from projects. I want to talk more generally. But yes, if, if, if that's, if it's, if that's the direction you're going, then I would say work with Lacey on this and, and meet with her and, and get that information to her so that she can, she can properly identify where your uses will fall into. But right now, what we're talking about is just the adding in the conditional use on the table for that.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question to administration through you? Regarding comments that were made being categorized as emergency residential shelter or transitional housing has indicated that potentially would impact grant funding. I'm just wondering if you can comment on that, administration? Is it important that there's a difference that's made between the two? Is that added, is the language added to emergency residential shelters or transitional housing? Just wondering if you have any context for that?
We have no information on those items. Transitional housing is not defined within our zoning bylaw. So it's not something I can comment on and we have no comment regarding funding for this particular project or project-specific regarding emergency shelter or transitional housing at this time.
So if we needed a category for, or if we needed somebody starting transitional shelter, what would that be categorized? Is it emergency shelter for the, now or?
I do not have an answer for you. That would require me to review the zoning bylaw to see what it would fit best, under what specific category.
Okay, thank you.
If at all at this point.
Okay, next on the list is Angela Iceson. Okay, next on the list is Angela Isaac. You do that, okay. Then next on the list is Ronald James.
I, a man known as Ronald James, from Steinbach, near Avondale. I would like to start with one question, because I heard it, but I don't know where it is. It was talking about the relationship between private wells and public water systems. Was that in this bylaw thing? There's a talk between, if there's a private well, you cannot have a private well where it has a risk of entering public waterway or public pipes.
That's correct.
Is that in here?
There, there is a, there is, is a part that if you have, you have, if you're hooked up to city water...
Right, which is positive pressure.
Yeah.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
That policy is part of the official community plan, it is not part of the zoning bylaw.
Then that's...
Oh, I missed that one. Thank you for that clarification. I can't comment on that one now, can I? It's done, done deal. All right, I will be speaking towards the number 8.16, but in order to get there, just gather my thoughts, because I was on that water thing. Again, I want to address a little bit general before I get into that specific 8.16, and at the beginning, I would just like to say in general that I object, so I'm one of the twenty-five to, to have an objection here. Men and women's freedom are taken away by a thousand regulations. What I see is death by a thousand regulations. Do you know what it does to private business, a thousand regulations? It kills it. That's why Canada can't compete with the United States. That's just my comment. So, in 8.16, keeping of animals, I would like to say this: As the quality of food in the big stores go down, and the costs go up, and there are many large-scale production sites having their production murdered... Thank you for your attention to that word. The eight, four hundred ostriches in B.C., the multitude of chickens and turkeys and cheap protein being killed because the government regulations come in there, ramp up a PCR test, and make it impossible to substantiate the health. Why doesn't your council promote gardens, animals, any production? We are seeing the men and women of this community have all gone to these big box stores and watched, week after week, prices go up. Do you know, for, for your shits and giggles, a nice little chocolate bar I used to enjoy a year ago was a dollar eighty-nine. Just the other day, at one of our great stores, the big ones, it was three sixty-nine.
Excuse me, Mr.?
Ronald James.
Ronald James.
Yes.
If you could get to your point on this, because let's talk about the animal units on a, on one acre, so these are farming units, that are farming lands that are still in the city of Steinbach, so yeah, like, I don't know how that has a correlation to the price of chocolate bars.
Well, thank you. I would have probably ended by the time you clarified that, but thank you for your patience here. What I'm trying to say is, as a council, I read through this document, and what I'm seeing is a thousand regulations. What I am not seeing, what I'm not seeing is a general attitude of acceptance towards private business trying to make it better for themselves and their community. What I see is regulations. What I'd like to see is that you begin to realize that there are homeless people, there are hungry people, there are lineups at the Helping Hands. Every time they pass something out, there's more people wanting than there is. Address that. Cash your checks, your paychecks, and address it by taking away some of the regulations and saying the community is in need. They are in need because they're hungry. So, let's have a couple more chickens. And those who want to plant grass, go ahead, but those who want to use their irrigated grass and plant gardens, I'm glad that you still haven't curtailed the planting of personal private gardens. I'm very happy about that. Has it been in your conversation as one of the regulations you'd want, the WEF wants to do it? They want it shut down?
We don't, we don't operate by law.
So, okay.
We do have community gardens in our, in our...
Yes. So, I would like you to reduce your regulations. So, in general, my objection is to all these regulations. You think it's necessary to have regulations. There were only ten commandments that founded this place, and right now, because of regulations, pay attention, son, right now, because of regulations, there are security guards parked at the Manitoba Legislature Building because they have separated themselves from the men and women of the community. They're scared of them. You're not. Thank you very much for that. You don't have security guards and police walking you to the cars and stuff like that, because there's still a dialogue here. Shut down the regulations. Make it easier in this hard time. Smirking won't help. It will not feed our families. Shut down the regulations and make it easier for men and women to take care of their families, build personal businesses. The foundation of the strength of this community came from not government businesses. So, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Come to the end of our list. Is there anyone here with comments, questions, or objections to this file? Is there anyone in the, in the, go ahead.
Tony Clark, eighteen Ramsgate. Just two really brief questions. I don't need to stick around for answers, but just concerned that, I object, first of all. I'm just concerned that, here's the first question. Twenty-five objectors, does that need to be in person, speaking, or just written?
Oh, it can be either. We, we accept emails to that.
All sorts, okay.
But, sorry, this is a part of the written objections that have already been received by them.
Okay.
So those will count, but if they come after the public hearing closes, technically they don't.
So if there was...
This was advertised.
Right.
And you, you can't speak from the gallery, sorry, but this was advertised.
So if those papers were to come in, in the next little while, that would be important? That's what I'm hearing you say?
Yeah, whatever's received by tonight.
Okay.
And then whoever speaks tonight, yes?
To clarify, Mr. Mayor, the objections must be received by the end of this public hearing.
Okay.
Okay, good. Second question. And this could be just a general response. In the idea of conditional use, how do you protect against discrimination when people have opinions that limit other people's rights? Is that clear?
Yes.
Okay.
And what we, the reason why we've come up with this, we thought this was the fairest way to hear from everyone. As, as the project was announced, there was, there was a lot of people that came to see councilors, and it wasn't, it was, it was, it wasn't just bad, it was good and bad. And because of that, we decided that it would be best if we would all get together, if there was a project on the table, that we'd all get together and we would hear from everyone, and everyone would have a chance to, to speak, and from there, we could make a decision. And there's lots of times we have a public hearing, and there's, you know, even reasonable objections, and, and we still, we vote in favor of it. It's not, it's not that just because everyone comes out against it, or there's a majority against it, doesn't mean we won't vote for it. It's just, we voted, and we look at it on the basis of the project, and what it, what it does and what it'll bring to the community. And so, that, that is why we wanted to have the opportunity to do so, because when, when I was getting comments and people would come see me at our business, I thought, Kate, the best thing is that we, that we do this. We put it as a conditional use so that we can actually hear from the people. And there's, there's so many things in our bylaw that is conditional use, and I, I think this, this is, now that, we didn't really recognize it before, because it's, it's never come up, but I think now we see it, I think it, it would work best as a conditional use. So it's not to be discriminated, but it's, it's to be, to be fair. That's, that's where we're looking at it from, the point of view. But I can, I can see, I can see both sides. You want to take the podium? Yeah.
Okay, so I just have two questions. One is...
Your name and your...
Nathan Penner, and I'm living in St. Malo. My one question is, does the council have a homeless strategy?
Well, I mean, there are things I'm, I am working on with Minister Smith, but, but a direct homeless strategy, this, it doesn't fall under municipal jurisdiction.
Okay.
That doesn't mean that, that, you know, we're against it or support it.
I just didn't know if there was...
It does not fall under our jurisdiction.
Yeah.
You know, what falls under is, most of our jurisdiction is land use, sewer and water.
Yeah.
And roads, right? That falls under our jurisdiction.
Okay.
But there's so much going on and downloading from other, other levels of government, that there are things we are assuming that we shouldn't be assuming.
It was an innocent question, I wasn't...
No, no, I'm just explaining to you. Just give me background.
I just didn't know if you had your own, that's different, or... And then the other one is, if transitional housing doesn't fit into any of the current bylaws, what happens? Like, like, do, can you create something now? Does it take five years?
No, it, what, what happens is, when, when our staff will perceive a detailed use, what's going to be happening, then they will find the category it falls into.
Right, but it's just...
Right now, we don't know.
Comment is, if it doesn't actually fit anywhere, then what? Or it always will.
I'm sure, well, we'll have to see where that goes, but right now, we, we don't know where it fits, is what our staff is saying, because we don't know what the, what the, the exact use will be.
Yeah. Yeah, I was just, again, just curious, policy-wise.
Yeah.
What happens if it doesn't fit?
That, we'll deal with that when it, when it comes up.
Thank you.
Thanks. Yes, go ahead.
Lisa Clark, eighteen Ramsgate. I object to the bylaw, and I think you'll find that there's over twenty-five objections before the end of the evening, which is unfortunate, that we weren't able to determine where we fit in regard to transitional shelter versus emergency shelter, and our objection is more or less to make sure that if we do get thrown under this category, that, that we're protecting ourselves. So, and specifically to the bylaw, I think, I would say that my concern in regard to the bylaw is, is in the, in the way of discrimination. So, there's a test called the cringe test, and so what it suggests is removing, you know, I've heard people in the community say, "We don't want addicts in our community, we don't want homeless in our community, or in our neighborhood." And so if you remove that specific group of people, whether they're homeless, they're addicted, they're whatever, and you replace it with another people group, like black people or Mennonites, we don't want black people in our neighborhood. That's clearly discriminatory, and so I believe that there is precedent provincially and federally that doesn't allow this type of discrimination against people groups. So New Directions, which is a Winnipeg company, they started off creating group homes for people with intellectual disabilities, and they've expanded their services to homes for refugees, black refugees. And in 2010, they attempted to open a group home, which is very close to what we're offering, and they were opposed by the municipality of Springfield, and so a human rights complaint violation was filed. It did end up going before a judge who founded, who found in, on behalf of New Directions on all counts, and the municipality was fined and had to pay legal costs and also reimbursement to the people that were discriminated against. So I believe there is precedent that, I understand why there's concerns, I understand why there's fears. It is a difficult conversation, but I do believe that the Canadian Charter of Human Rights and the Manitoba Human Rights Commission does protect all peoples and the right to safety, security, and a place to live. It is an amendment right, and in fact, it goes so far to show that there have been case, case precedent, both in B.C. and Ontario, and I didn't plan on speaking tonight, so I'm happy to provide that case law for you, but I've reviewed it at length, and the judges have ruled that, under the charter, everyone is entitled to safety and security, which includes housing. And so, in these instances where municipalities or cities were attempting to remove encampments, the judge actually ruled in favor of the unhoused people living in the encampments, so long as those were on government land, because they said that everyone is entitled to a place to live, and if a municipality or city does not provide shelter for those people, they still have that in-err right, and so those encampments were ordered to stay. Now, what we're proposing is that encampments are not great, they're not good for anybody. And I understand that every neighborhood, even if we try to take it to another neighborhood, we're going to be having the same conversation. What I oppose is leaving any room at a city council level for people to show discrimination towards a people group that's vulnerable and deserve the right to shelter, and so that is why I oppose this bylaw.
Thank you. Anyone else? Kate, go ahead.
Hello, my name is Christine Gerbrandt, I live on Castle Rock Cove. I just have a quick question. I have an objection, I'm just wondering where I can hand it in.
You can just hand it to Amanda.
Thank you, that's it.
Okay, go ahead.
My name's Corinne, I live at forty-eight Portel Crestons. I'm in favor of this bylaw. I believe everyone has the right to be safe as well, and I live in this neighborhood, and I, I also feel like maybe our safety is a problem too. And so I have a daughter who walks to the theater close by, and I want her to be safe when she walks past, when she walks home, so it's just a concern, and I think all of us have safeties and concerns, and I just want us all to be listened to, so, that's mine.
Anyone else? Is there anyone here with comments, questions, or objections to this file? Yeah, come, come to the podium. Just state your name and your address, please.
Tina Barkman, Bloomingford. I have a question in regards to the chart that was shown before and the changes that were being made. I took a screenshot, I'll just quickly see if I can access it now, and here it is, okay. A zoning bylaw is a tool to help implement the OCP, to set out specific rules for the use of land and buildings, and the location and form of buildings, divides the city into zones and lists permitted and conditional uses for land and building in each zone, establishes a system of permits and procedures for development. Now, I understand... Now, I understand our city has been divided into zones for years. There's residential, there's business, there's industrial. Why do we need more zones? To me, it sounds like we are just putting up more fences, higher walls, more exclusive, more restricted, more division, more disunity. We don't need more disunity and more division. We need to unite our communities, not divide more and more and more. So I want to register, I object.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
I'm Brian Bartel, and I live in the arm of Hanover. Uh, I would just like to speak in favor of the bylaw. I think open dialogue and, and just going through a process of, of, um, approval for, for a homeless shelter or a transitional home included, I think it includes the whole community, we all get to speak into it. And I think that's a healthy thing. I think for a lot of these emergency shelters and, and things like that, they need community acceptance and assistance to be successful. So I think this is just a healthy process, so I speak in favor of the bylaw.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else with comments, questions, or objections to this file? I'll give one more chance. Is there anyone here with comments, questions, or objections to this file? Yep.
Sorry, I know you've given people an opportunity to object, but I just want to clarify that under the legislation, if you don't file an objection now, if council was to proceed with second reading and notify you of an opportunity to provide a second objection, if you haven't already objected, that second objection won't count. Just so that you're aware.
Okay. Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing, open the council meeting. Counsel, how would you like to proceed? Counsel Penner?
Motion to approve.
Seconded by Counsel Penner as well, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As mentioned, uh, the city reviews its zoning bylaws approximately every five years. And this is particularly important in a city like ours that is growing and changing so rapidly. So bylaws that may have made sense in the past may not make sense anymore, or may need to be adjusted to fit what is taking place, or even be added as new scenarios come up. So we want bylaws to both guide our community, but also reflect what is happening in our community. Regarding the bylaw that most people in the gallery seem to be here for, regarding emergency residential, making, uh, emergency residential shelters a conditional use. And I would feel those, my comments apply if there'd be category for transitional housing as well. This is a very straightforward decision for me, primarily for two reasons. First, any developer or business that wants to build residential in a commercial zoning category has to come to the city for conditional use. An emergency, emergency residential shelter or transitional, uh, housing should not be any different. If a residential component is involved in a project, whatever that project is, the same bylaws should apply across the board, regardless of who is building it and what it is being used for. Second, neighborhoods should be able to have a formal mechanism to voice their support for or concerns about an emergency overnight shelter going in their neighborhood. And a conditional use allows that to happen, as it requires a public hearing. So for all the public, um, feedback we've received in this situation from the inn, we've also received tremendous, I know council has privately, less visibly, received a lot of people who want a formal voice. And a conditional use allows that to happen, whether it's for the inn or any other, um, organization that wants to put up, uh, emergency shelter, transitional homes. So for me, it's really just a matter of having a level playing field. If you put up residential, no matter who it is, no matter what it's for, the same bylaw should apply across the board. And also, we want neighborly, in this situation, we want neighborhoods to have the opportunity to speak to council in the same way everybody here tonight has had the opportunity to speak to council. Um, moving on, I'm very pleased to see the addition of detached secondary suites in rural residential areas, as long as a primary homeowner is living on site. This, I think, is a really, uh, important change to our bylaws. The intention of this is to allow for a small residential unit to be built on a property for those that need caregiving, but also want independence. So this would work well for families taking care of an aging parent. They want to be able to, you know, you know, keep their parent, um, you know, offer them help or keep them in sight, uh, but also give them independence. So this allows for a secondary suite to be built on site. Another important change to this bylaw is reducing parking requirements in the Central Business District by one-third. This makes sense, because virtually every variance that has come through council about parking in that area has been approved, so it makes sense to just add that to the bylaw. Is that is something we are doing anyways. Another change that's been made, I remember when we did this in, I guess, 2018, we were, we really wanted there to be commercial on main floors of, uh, mixed use, like mixed, uh, we want a commercial and residential on top, and we thought that would, that would work well. What we've been seeing is that there's a lot of multifamily that's coming, and they're asking not to have residential on the main, or commercial on the main floor. So that too is a natural change that we are making to the bylaws. Um, obviously, there are many other changes, but those are just a few of the highlights.
Thank you. Anything further?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, the OCP in its, uh, in its essence is what, uh, long-term developers look at. They're looking at the 25, 30, where's the, where's the land movement going to go? Uh, the, the actual zoning bylaw, that's the more nuts and bolts of the builders. Those are the ones that are currently putting up the buildings and the, the regulations and rules that they're going to need to follow. So that's where, where this is going. And, um, there, we're making sure that we're being very business-friendly in the changes that we're doing, and it's very friendly in the way that we've been seeing businesses develop. Often when, uh, a lot of this is influenced by, uh, by, um, sorry, my apologies, um, conditional, or not conditional uses. I am completely freezing, variances, my apologies, Mr. Mayor. Uh, when we see variances coming in for, for different land uses. And, uh, so this is influenced by that. And, uh, so, for example, as Counselor Penner, uh, addressed before, uh, we don't want our Central Business District to be full of sprawling parking lots. We, businesses want to be wise and make sure they have enough parking, so it's better for them to decide, so we're cutting down, uh, the amount of parking that is required by all businesses. Uh, and also some beautification of Main Street, making sure that our buildings are on, on the, uh, on the sidewalk and, uh, aren't just solid walls, but are glazed nicely. And, uh, we're also deregulating with relation to our Transitional Pod District, where there used to be things that were, uh, needed, that were permitted, but are now as of right. So offices, personal services, restaurants, and clinics. So to kind of be a bit of an incubator to our Central Business District of those, uh, roads that are just a little bit off of the CBD, a little bit on the peripheral roads. Uh, also, you know, uh, with regards to parking, it used to be a little bit, uh, difficult to be able to understand how many parking stalls you were needing. So we're getting rid of those metrics of how many chairs do you have? It's more based on square footage and the usage that's going to be in there. And also, as Counselor Penner alluded to, uh, detached secondary suites is something that's incredibly, uh, important to me. As costs are rising for everybody, it's a lot more difficult to support elderly family as well as help, uh, early adults get a foot up. So by having detached secondary suites allowed, uh, as a conditional use in certain areas that are usually larger lots, and, uh, that, that allows the family to stay together, but then also financially, uh, maybe give a, a helping hand, or if they're needing personal help as well with care or such. And then also, uh, with regards to the changing of, uh, of permitted use to conditional for emergency overnight shelters, um, I'm glad that everybody came out here tonight and was able to voice their opinions. That's what a public hearing is about. It's great for everybody to be able to come out and, and voice where their concerns are with regards to our OCP, with regards to our zoning bylaw. And I feel like that, uh, should also be continued to, with regards to an emergency overnight shelter, to the community, to be able to comment specifically on that plan as well, should one come. So I think public engagement is incredibly important. That's why we have the public hearings, that's why we've allowed everybody to speak. But I think that should be continued for individuals that are wanting to speak on that use as well.
Thank you. Anything further, counsel? Counsel speaks.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm happy to support the zoning bylaw, and I just want to highlight a few things. First of all, uh, the bylaw has been reorganized, and for those who like to see regulations be reduced and things be simplified, the number of pages is going down from 155 to 106. So I'm pleased that we're one of the government agencies that's actually trying to reduce and simplify and shorten things, because we obviously do support, uh, businesses, and, uh, we want growth and development to happen here. Uh, I'm also glad that we do these public hearings at the same time, so that way those who attend and those who watch in line can see how the official community plan and the zoning bylaw work together. In the official community plan, it sets out the districts in a broad sense. So for example, it identifies Central Business District, and it sets some general intent as far as we want to see densification, we want to see more, uh, higher-level development within the Central Business District. You then go to the zoning bylaw to look at, okay, what does that look like more specifically? And so, for example, the zoning bylaw says that required parking may be reduced by one-third for all uses in the CBD. And so again, that's part of that, that's part of the densification. And so, uh, that is just one example of where you have the broad statement in the, in the official community plan, and then the more detailed application of it in the zoning bylaw. As far as the, uh, the issue that has come up in regards to the conditional use and, uh, emergency residential shelter, um, I have the zoning bylaw in front of me. And so, uh, for example, I'll just pick a couple of items here, just in general. Uh, suppose you wanted to establish a, a funeral home, uh, in a commercial zone, uh, C2 or C3 or C4. Could you just go ahead and have it as a permitted use? No, it's actually a conditional use. Is it because we don't like funeral homes? Is it because we're trying to stop them from developing? No, it's because a funeral home may be an appropriate use in a commercial district, or it might not be, because it depends. It depends on the overall neighborhood, it depends on exactly what's being proposed, and that's why a public hearing would need to happen. If you wanted to set up a, a funeral home in a commercial zone. Uh, suppose you wanted to set up a pet daycare. Uh, well, that's a conditional, uh, conditional category in a variety of zones. Most of the commercial and the, in, uh, the industrial, it's a commercial. Are we against pet daycares? Of course not. Uh, we simply, uh, believe that, uh, it's important that there'd be a public hearing, because it might be an appropriate use and it might not be. Uh, frankly, even a hospital is a conditional use in the, uh, commercial zones. Again, because it depends on the situation. We're not against hospitals, we're not trying to stop them from developing, but we recognize that that type of development has a pretty big impact on a neighborhood, and obviously, there would need to be a public hearing. I don't think we're getting a new hospital, uh, we've just expanded, the province has expanded the one we have now, and that is great. So when we look at the topic of emergency residential shelter and that type of project, again, it's the same principle, that if you're gonna, if there's a project that is before us at some point, then it's appropriate that we have an official public hearing, where we hear from the applicant, we hear from those who are presenting it, the final version of the plan with all the details, and then anyone, you know, from the community gets a chance to comment and raise questions and such. And then after getting all the information from a formal presentation and from the, uh, community, council then makes a decision. It frankly looks a lot like what we're seeing right here. Right now, we are doing a public hearing on our zoning bylaw, where we find out what is in the zoning bylaw. We then have, uh, you know, everyone has a chance to comment. We even allow people who don't live in Steinbeck to comment, uh, if they wish to do so. And then council makes a decision. And so I appreciate all the people that have come out here today. If you appreciate being part of this process, if you like the fact that you're able to comment on the official community plan and the zoning bylaw, and you think that public feedback and public hearings are important, I think the same principle would apply if there's a project, uh, in the category of emergency residential shelter, just like we do like for a whole lot of other categories, because it might be an appropriate fit, it might not be, it depends, same as the other categories we have here. So I think the zoning bylaw changes make sense, and I'm very happy to support them.
Thank you. Is there anything, uh, Counsel Seaman?
I would like to adjust, uh, a little bit, I don't, also, my intent isn't to repeat a whole lot of, uh, what's been said. And I, I agree with what's been said, and I, uh, to me, this is, uh, this zoning bylaw is much bigger than what, what, how we've identified, there's, uh, these are the rules. And I also appreciate the fact that, uh, the wording has been reduced. And each time we redo a zoning bylaw, it's simpler to read. It's in more plainest, uh, English, uh, language. 2006, when we first got on council, we, we were trying to read through the zoning bylaws, and the whereas and what for's that were in there, and we have come a long way in putting it into proper English, so it is a little bit easier. But it is still a separate language that has to be understood when you read it, and exactly what you're reading, and how it correlates with the official community plan. Uh, just a few things, uh, too. Uh, five years ago, we didn't deal with data processing centers or bitcoin mining in our community, which we do today. Solar energy generating systems, industrial multiplexes, uh, detached secondary suites, as we've talked about here, and emergency residential shelters. Those are five that we didn't deal with five years ago, that are all prevalent in our community today. All of them are required to have a conditional use, uh, hearings. So there's, uh, a lot of it, but there's a lot to unpack in this. Uh, but I do appreciate, also want to acknowledge the staff again, who spend countless hours with consultants and, uh, listening to the council rabbit trails that we continually put them under, whenever we would meet to discuss the, the what-ifs and what-for's of all of these things. And I also want to reiterate, uh, public hearings are extremely important for council to hear, uh, from the public on the various issues that, that face us, uh, our community today, because there is a lot of valuable feedback that we get through those, uh, through the process. I appreciate everyone who, uh, who spoke here today, because it does give us, uh, perspective as we make decisions.
Anything further, counsel? Anything closing?
Uh, nothing further. I think these changes reflect what is best for the city of Steinbach.
Well, counsel, I, uh, I do, I, I have to agree with Counselor Seaman's. I do like public hearings, because I like what they bring out. They bring out, they bring people out, and we start to discuss about the community. Um, thank you very much, everyone from the, the Board of the Inn for coming out and representing your board. Uh, Lisa, I'm just asking if you could email me that ruling, because I, I think it's a good read. I'd like to read it, if you could do that for me. Thank you, okay? And, um, uh, but I do believe that there's a lot of times when we have, we have concerns that are going on in our, in our communities, I think it's best to have a public hearing about it. There's so many times, we, we have public hearings every meeting, and, and we make decisions based on what we hear at that public hearing. I want to thank everyone too for coming out. This is, you're giving up a Tuesday, we're used to giving up Tuesdays, that's what we do. But you guys gave up your Tuesdays, Tuesday to come here and listen, and, and, and listen to us, listen to everyone that was here, thank you so much. It's great to see the passion on both sides, passion, passion for and against. And that's what we saw when we, when we, when we, um, heard about, and the project was out there, and it was getting media attention from the Inn, we heard lots of passion from lots of people, for and against. And that's why it, it made sense to have a public hearing. And, and, um, so there's lots of great things, lots of good changes. Uh, we did, uh, we did reduce a lot of wordage, we reduced some of the things. We tried to represent what's happening in our community. Uh, according to the shutdown of regulations, when you have a lot of population living together, you need regulations to protect also. Uh, so, you know, the, the amount of animals you brought, like, if we let everyone have chickens in the backyard, it would just be chaotic, right? Uh, there, you never know if there's a rooster and someone's waking you up at, at, at the crack of dawn, and, and also the, the disease they bring. And it, it's not a place, on a farm, it's different, but you have it in the backyard, chickens are, I, I know that chickens bring a lot of disease. And that's why we have these regulations. The regulations are there to protect, protect land values, uh, protect how we live, how we do business in our community. And we're not trying to be onerous, we're, we're constantly, uh, every time I think we look at this, it gets, it gets less. I think it was about that thick when we got on council. This is getting less and less all the time. So I do believe we're reducing regulations, but yet there are just some we have to have. Again, thank you, everyone, and, um, I will call for the question. All those in favor of first reading? Opposed, that is carried. We'll go directly into second reading. Motion to approve.
Approve.
Seconded by Counsel Hebert. Any comments?
Nothing further.
Nothing further, thank you.
Okay, call for the question, all those in favor, opposed, that is carried. Okay, thank you for- Thank you for coming out. We'll keep moving on into the rest of the meeting. Oh. Counsel, we'll move to number nine, Administration. The counts payable in the back of the book, you've all had a chance to review, looking for motion to approve. Counsel Penner, seconded by Counsel Hebert. Call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Okay, we have number nine, B, Bylaw 2262. This is referring to 286 Henry Street. We'll be doing first reading today, counsel. Mr. Workinney, could you please introduce this file?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Proposed bylaw 2262, which references 286 Henry Street in Steinbach, is a rezoning bylaw that's being applied for by Jordan Lowen, with the owner of the property being Brett Adenham and Gianithan Del Vecchio. Purpose of bylaw 2262 is to rezone the subject property from RLD residential low density to RMD residential medium density, to permit a two-story multifamily development to be constructed. The recommendation from Administration is that council give this bylaw first reading, and if that is done, it would permit the public hearing to be scheduled later on this spring.
Thank you, Mr. Workinney. Counsel, how would you like to proceed? Counsel Seaman?
Motion to approve.
Seconded by Counsel Swagstraw. Any comments?
I believe that we need to send it to second reading, so that we can hear a public meeting, to whether it should happen or not. We can hear from the neighborhood.
Anything further?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When we do rezonings, it triggers a public hearing, and we've all proclaimed our love of public hearings, so we look forward to a public hearing.
Anything further, counsel? Anything closing?
Nothing.
Call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Okay, next is nine, C, Counsel Hebert's favorite.
It's all you, Bill.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. Do we have a second, or Counsel Swagstraw?
Just to get it on the floor.
Okay. Any comments?
No comments.
Call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Okay, we've got nine, D. This is the appointment of the Steinbach Weed Inspector. There's a resolution on 46, and it's 46, and this is something we do every year. It is just housekeeping, and we usually use our community safety, our services officer, Grant Ryland, and the motion is to appoint him as the weeds, the noxious weeds inspector. Counsel? Counsel Penner?
Motion to approve.
Seconded by Counsel Swagstraw. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to appreciate the attention to detail that Administration has of making sure that it is noxious weeds inspector, and not noxious weed inspector.
Oh.
Puts it on Administration's.
More than one weed? Okay.
Anything further?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As one of the regulations that we have in Steinbach, people can't just let weeds go crazy, and so, that's why we designate our community services officer to enforce our rules on that. So, this is an annual resolution we pass.
Okay. Anything closing?
Actually, yes, Mr. Mayor. I want to make sure it's clear. I was not throwing the Administration under the bus and seeing that there was no S on weed there, but there is here, and I was referring to what is in our pamphlet, not what is on there. So, just want to clarify that for Administration's sake.
Okay. Call for the question. All those in favor? Povis, that is carried. Okay, we'll move on. Is there any questions of counsel today? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Eleven, A, we've got the Eastman Municipal Committee for South Subcommittee, minutes of March 10. Counsel, would you like to proceed? Take his information.
Please.
Okay. We've got the eleven, B, we've got Seine-Rat-Rozel-Watershed District. This is referring to the minutes of February 18, February 19, February 28, March 3, and March 5. Counsel, would you like to proceed? Take his information.
Yes.
Okay. We got eleven, C. This is a Minister of Public Safety, response to the letter sent January 10, 2025. That's on page 64. Counsel, would you like to do, take his information at this time? And we've got eleven, D. This is the Steinbeck Bible College. This is the golf sponsorship. How would you like to proceed on that? Take his information also? Okay. There's no other business. Looking for a motion to adjourn. Counsel Hebert, seconded by Counsel Seaman. Call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Next regular council meeting is Tuesday, April 15, 2025, 7:33 PM.